The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Plainville Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, October 17, 2022. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll have Councilwoman Tompkins lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight, but I would like to make a comment and ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of the three Bristol police officers, two of whom passed. Officer Hamsey and Officer Del Monte were killed in a domestic violence call in Bristol, not far from our town line, by the way, over on Redstone Hill. And Officer Lorato was injured. He is recovering from his injuries. They were responding to a 911 call and were ambushed by somebody who was purely evil and out to harm and do terrible things to the Bristol police officers. So if you would take a moment, please, in remembrance of those gentlemen, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I'm wishing their families peace at some future time. I am sure this is a trauma that many will not recover from if ever, or this is a very difficult time for all. All right. I'll move along with the rest of our agenda. Tonight, we have a public hearing regarding our sewer user rate, November 1, 2022, to October 31, 2023. And I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Plainville Town Council, acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 17, 2022, in the council chambers in the municipal center, one central square, to consider the following: sewer user rate for the period November 1, 2022, to October 31, 2023. Copies of the proposed rates are available at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 13th day of October, 2022.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing to the public, Michael, could just give us a quick overview of where we are with this and what this sewer rate represents?
Sure. Thank you. So this is the second year in a row of a zero increase. The rates will remain the same. The current rate for the standard charge is $58.06. The minimum charge is $415.92. The well users' charge is $515.68, and the affluent discharge is $166.38. All of those are the same numbers as previous year. The fund is in good shape. Fund balance is on $4,465,351. We have the three months of expenses of $1,061,277. So that is the reason and the case for presenting a recommendation for a 0% increase this year.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much for that. I will open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Turn on your mic, please. That's a button right in the middle. Perfect. Thank you.
John Kislick, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. I'm glad to hear that because I came here to fight for no rate increase. I wanted to ask what our fund balance is, and it's good. It's in good shape. I want to know how much revenue is generated through the sewer use fees. Does anybody have that number? In other words, what every household pays.
Do we have that?
I don't know whatever household pay. I just know what the total generated is $4,123,500.
Okay, so that's almost equal to what our surplus is, right? Okay. That's great. Now, my other issue, and I brought this up before, this system you have for taxing the people or charging them is really, really unfair. You could have someone who uses half the amount of water down a sewer as someone else, and they still paid $415-plus a year. I've been asking for the council or whoever to look into this to try to get a new fee schedule. Trying to say it's complicated, but I don't see how it could be complicated when you have every household has a different assessment on their house. So a different valuation with the same mill rate, why can't something like this be done? It's really, really unfair to a one- or two-person household, like I said, who sends half the water down a sewer system to pay the same as somebody who sends twice as much.
Sure, I got that. I think maybe with some additional information, some of the costs of the water pollution control plant are to pay for the capital improvements that have been done there. I'm not sure that it's operationally driven. I know that we have undergone two major capital improvements in the sewer plant over the past 15 years or so, and we just finished a major improvement down there. So much of the cost actually goes to paying the debt on the sewer capital projects that have been done, not necessarily what you use, but it pays other costs down there.
Yeah, but we get grants from state and federal for those projects. The town pays a smaller amount.
I don't know that we have gotten grants about that. I know that we have borrowed, we have borrowed dollars at a low interest rate to pay for those, but I'm not sure about a grant situation, John. We'd have to look into that.
I could be wrong, but I thought there is some federal and state money in these projects.
Well, again, as I said, from the best of my recollection, the town was able to secure low-interest loans, like 1% or 2% through that, but I don't remember getting a grant where we didn't have to pay the dollars back. We can find out.
And then like this Honor Heights project that's coming up. I mean, all the homeowners are going to be assessed, I guess, at least $10,000 each. That's the maximum. A good part of that's going to pay for the project, and I really don't know if the state gives us something for that, too. But I just think, I'm really glad that year, you're not going to have an increase this year with that fund balance, but I still would like to see something changed in how the people pay. If they do a new schedule, you can still collect the same amount of money or more, you just have a different limit. Instead of $400, I mean, somebody who does half the amount of cubic feet sent down the sewer system, you just change it, you know? It can be done. I mean, with computers today, these guys do anything you can think of, you know? So it's just a request I have. How about if we look into it? I'm not the only person who complains about this. There's a lot of, you know, elderly people, they use very little water. And I hear people that I knew before trying to save water when they're taking their showers. They sudge up. Here's old seniors, suds up and turn off the water. What the heck they could have used, and they're going to pay the same amount for the sewer bill. Instead, they get stuck with suds of soap all over their body. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Kislick, before you leave, do you know whether or not that fee schedule is the same in all communities or just in certain ones?
No. I mean, I think every town is different. Every town does their sewer uses different. I think New Britain, it'd be really high.
Michael, would you know if they are different, any different in the other communities?
I would imagine that there is some differences. I don't know. I can't speak to that, but something we can find out, certainly. We can inquire about that.
Thank you.
And get information and do some analysis on whether or not that's feasible. I don't know at this point, but we can review.
I believe every town is different. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing tonight of the zero rate increase? No? Nobody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your participation. Moving on to the minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 3, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary.
I did attend the Library Board of Trustees meeting last Tuesday evening on October 11. And just one highlight, they're continuing to work on their review and the revision of all the library policies, and they voted on one set of policies, and they're going to be continuing other sets at the future meetings.
Okay. That's it for you?
That's it.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to report? I just have a couple of items. I'll keep it brief. I attended the Commission, the Committee on Aging last Thursday. The Committee is sponsoring a Veterans Luncheon on November the 10th for $8 a person. It's requested that if you're interested in attending, please contact the Senior Center to get on a list so they can do some pre-planning. On October 20, the Senior Center is going to be hosting our town manager at a meet and greet.
Yes.
Yep. Michael will be there to meet the members of the Senior Center and the staff, and I'm sure they're going to, you're going to have a lovely time there. They do a nice job when they have these new folks come in, so I'm sure it'll be great. COVID Booster Clinic is going to be October 7 and the 24th from 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. You can call the Senior Center for an appointment, and they also take walk-ins. They are offering boosters to Pfizer and Moderna, so that's, as we come into the flu season, or it's maybe already here, might be something people want to take care of at that time. The café has reopened. It's open Tuesday and Wednesday from 11:30 to 1:00. They were closed during the entire COVID experience, but now they're back up and running, and that's a very popular offering at the Senior Center. November 5, they'll be having a craft fair from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM. They have 19 vendors. The café will be open. Thanksgiving dinner is going to be planned yet again. Mr. George Finnick is in charge of coordinating the Thanksgiving dinner. He's been doing this for many, many years, over 60 years. I don't know if George has been doing it all that long, but it's been a long-held tradition at the Senior Center. Nazzos will cook the food, and they will offer meals for the homebound that will be delivered to them as well. Let's see. The social worker is going to be very, very busy because of, as we all, or many of us know, the annual health insurance sign-up is upon us. The social worker is very, very good about deciding exactly what plan is most suited for folks that need certain services. So they are also going to be doing that. So needless to say, the Senior Center is always busy, has a lot of activity. People are returning after a two-year hiatus. They're feeling more comfortable, so it's a good group. And Sean and Rhonda do a very nice job of keeping everybody informed and up to speed as to what's going on. And I hope I didn't read all of your stuff that you're going to read. Oh, sorry. Oh, it's you now. Sorry. Some of it, you may have more stuff, different stuff.
I have some different stuff.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. And one more item that I would like to, two more items, actually. I attended the ribbon cutting out at Robertson Airport. Rosemary and David were there, along with the town manager and a variety of other folks. And the purpose of the ribbon cutting, if you will, is Robertson Airport has undergone a tremendous transformation. If any of you had ever been there many, many years ago when it was in operation, it's been in operation since 1911, and it's gone through several different owners. Stan Robertson owned it, and then the Tomaso Group owned it, and the town of Plainville purchased the airport in 2009. But, you know, again, it's an older facility. The buildings needed some upgrading, and it's absolutely beautiful. They have done everything from top to bottom. Rosemary was there, and Dave, they know how wonderful it is.
Absolutely.
They added outdoor seating space. They added a patio. They're going to put outside the patio a gas-fired fire pit.
Yes.
So I think they're doing a very, very nice job there in attracting people to come to Robertson Airport. A lot of folks that fly these smaller private planes like to go from one airport to the other, and they go and have lunch at one, and then they'll stop at another one and have coffee. It's really a social group that does that. And our little airport is really a place where a lot of people come. They're very busy, and it's nice to have such a thing. So they did a lovely job of redoing. The entire building has been completely upgraded, so it was very nice. And my last report is, as I've been saying for the past three weeks, the Pumpkin Fest is this Saturday, October 22, from 4 to 8:00 PM downtown Plainville. There's a lot of activity. There's food. There's a children's parade. There's vendors. There'll be entertainment. There will be plenty of pumpkins. So if you get a chance to stop by, it's a fun event. It's free. There are buses that will be running from the high school, a shuttle delivering folks into the center, so that there should not be a parking problem. And we are looking forward to some very good weather. So if you can make it, please do stop by. And that is it for me. So I said enough. So we'll move on to appointments and resignations. Do we have any appointments tonight?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, motion to reappoint to the Zoning Board of Appeals Peter Ottenno Jr. of Fawn Drive for the term 10/122 to 10/127.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments tonight? Nope. Okay. Moving along. No Board of Ed meeting tonight. Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything for us?
I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay. Nice to see you. Okay. Port to the town manager. Michael, your turn.
My leadoff was the Pumpkin Festival, and I think you covered that, but I am excited about it, both myself and Andy, and I want to thank Andy and other staff that have come together to help out and understand.
Oh, yeah.
And where we can assist with the preparations. So as you mentioned, you know, shuttle buses will be going. That's important, so people understand the parking. And again, my understanding is a pretty good draw and a great community event with a lot to offer free, and, you know, the parade, there's a magic show. I had all kinds of notes here, so I'm learning and understanding, but...
Michael's first Pumpkin Fest.
My first Pumpkin Fest, right? But as long as they throw food in there.
Oh, there's a lot of food, yeah.
And I think we had an earlier conversation about the number of food trucks and vendors there, so I guess you can sample pretty much on anything and everything. So that's always a draw and always fun, so I'm looking forward to it. And again, there's plenty of information on the website, and we've been working with Chris, the coordinator. She's done a great job and met internally, so, you know, there's plenty of information out there. And again, hoping for great weather and a great turnout.
Good. I do want to thank town staff. They have assisted me in a number of ways regarding the Pumpkin Fest, getting pumpkin supplies, activities, and things like that. They have been very, very nice and very, very good-humored about it, I have to say. And Andy is going to be gutting and carving pumpkins, right, Andy?
I will be, hon.
So we recruited him. You're going to have so much fun. So I just had to add the fact that I do appreciate all that the town staff has done because it's a huge undertaking. Sometimes things don't go exactly according to the way you'd like it to go, and the staff has been very, very helpful. So thank you again.
Great. We're looking forward to it. Next item is the, fall is here, so it's Fall Bulk Collection, so I will comment on that, that there is an on-demand policy for collection of bulk pickup. Residents who currently have curbside rubbish and recycling collection from the town can request one bulk pickup per calendar year, free of charge, for large items that do not fit in the normal rubbish collection. A list of acceptable bulk items can be found on the town website, www平villect.com. Property owners who did not schedule a pickup this spring are eligible to participate this fall. Bulk Collection is taking place on Mondays through November 7. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup, and when calling, residents should be prepared to leave a message with their name, address, phone number, a list of bulk items, and the date to be picked up. And calls placed by 3:00 PM on Friday can be scheduled for collection the following Monday. So hopefully individuals will get the information necessary and make arrangements for that, but that is bulk collection for the fall. Item number three is the Honor Heights Sewer Project Discussion. As you recall, the recommendation from Engineering Department and the council to pre-select two consultants to provide design proposals, which the two consultants, Tiggenbond and LEA, have done, and those are the firms that are most familiar with the town's sanitary sewer system. By pre-selecting design consultants, this has expedited the selection process and shortened what would have been a six-week process. The project's expectations are to begin construction in April 2023 in order that the project can be completed by November 2023. So bid documents will be needed to be completed by February. Initiating the project design as soon as possible is a critical first step to keep the project on schedule. The two proposals from Tiggenbond and LEA associates have recently been reviewed and evaluated by the Engineering Department. Both proposals demonstrate their staffs have the appropriate experience. The proposed scopes and associated fees were similar. Tiggenbond was $66,750. LEA's was $68,000. Both understand the project goals and can successfully deliver the project. Tiggenbond's fee is slightly lower than LEA associates, so the recommendation of the Engineering Department is to authorize the town manager to negotiate the final scope and fee not to exceed $66,750 with Tiggenbond, and upon reaching an acceptable final scope and fee, execute such agreement. And of course, this item is under new business later on on the agenda. Item four is the review and purchase of the ordinance related to federal requirements. So we were working with Rob Budin in the Finance Department, given that this was a note in the audit in terms of coming into compliance with the federal regulations. So the town of Plainville is required to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR, procurement standards 200.317 through 200.327. And I'd like to just acknowledge that Andy's done some great analysis and put together a table for you, a comparison of the CFR to the town's procurement policies as enumerated in the Charter and Code of Ordinance, and that is attached in the packet. You'll see they're color-coded. The final column of the comparison chart summarizes the required actions with items in green indicating compliance and items in red indicating action required. Overall, the town's policies and practices are aligned with the CFR, and most cases, the items in red on the comparison chart are either standards that the town follows in practice but is not codified, or standards that do not apply to the town. So in other words, the incorporation of the CFR procurement standards will not or should not significantly change the town's existing purchasing practices. I think it really serves to only augment those and really highlight and descriptively say what we're doing in practice. So pending review with the Attorney Mastriani will continue to work on this. This is a sort of FYI, is an informational point. There's a lot to digest in the chart, so we're kind of throwing a lot at you. But again, it may look overwhelming. It may look like a lot, but essentially, we are following and doing that in practice, and we just need more time with Mike just to be sure that we understand what the code is saying, that we are interpreting it correctly, and that we will implement it. And again, the process in terms of how we're going to implement that, which is if it is an amendment to the ordinance, it'll have to go through the public hearing process, obviously. So this will be an item that will be coming back for the November meeting. Next item, item five, is the White Oak Project Update. And there, as you see in the notes, a lot that has already happened. I'll recap that. Previously, the town council has approved the Resolution of Financial Assistance Proposal, the FAP, and the FAP will provide the state grant of $1,170,000 for the remediation, abatement, and partial demolition of the former White Oak Corporate Office Center at 1 and 63 West Main Street. The town has also applied and been accepted into the Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program, or the ABC Program. This program offers municipalities and developers who are not responsible for contamination to be afforded liability relief from responsibility to investigate and remediate off-site contamination, provided that the project meets certain economic development thresholds, and remediation is completed under a formal DEEP program. Manafort Newport, the developer, is also applying to this program as well. And currently, Tiggenbond, the town's consultant for the remediation oversight, is completing the pre-remediation work, including updates to the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment Report and the Environmental Condition Assessment Form, the ECAP application. During a recent stakeholder meeting with Manafort Newport, Realty, a proposal was provided to repair a portion of the White Oak's roof, which has various holes and leak and is letting water infiltration is coming into the building. Doing so would prevent additional leaking and water damage and potentially create additional costs for testing and abatement should mold, mildew, or deterioration of other contaminants occur. And, you know, just further analysis on that, it's the scope of the project in which they've identified where the contaminants are in a certain location. If water were to continue to come through the building and wash or move some of those contaminants potentially, could increase the scope of the project in which you have to test other areas and then potentially remediate. So I think the thought process is anything we can do on the front end as, you know, ounce of prevention worth it versus the back-end expenses of environmental cleanup. Now, my own personal, you know, again, I think it's more probably to do with also the weight of water coming in, and I could be wrong. I'm no expert, but, you know, encapsulating asbestos wrapping around piping, and you have water infiltration, you know, the remediation has to be taken out. So if it's dry and it's a pound, if it's wet, it's a pound and a half, and you're disposing by weight, it's going to add up to a certain extent. Now, what that is in the magnitude, I have no idea. I've been through the building once, and so I haven't read through extensively to know the report, but I think this is just a preemptive measure. And that, again, is according to Harry Langford of Tiggenbond, certain asbestos PCB contaminating materials identified within the building could deteriorate in a humid environment or if exposed to water. So this is especially true for asbestos pipe and insulation, PCB contaminating plaster and gypsum walls that are present within much of the office building. So if these materials are allowed to deteriorate and fall into the floor, it could result in additional abatement costs, i.e. through the testing of materials. So the response from the state indicates that the costs appear to be eligible and reasonable expenses for use under the Brownfield Grant Fund, and our Economic Development Coordinator, Cal, is also looking at potentially either that source to cover the costs or the actual funding for the roof, which, as a roof repair, could be covered under that. So the answer is still pending, but at least we know that if we go the route of the Environmental Fund, that would be an eligible cost that could be picked up. And the magnitude of that repair on the first quote, again, is $12,300. We could go out and look at other quotes to bring that number down as well. So it is an added cost that we hope to pick up one way or the other through environmental or the roof funds, but hopefully it'll be coming down, we hope, on a lower quote. But something that should be done in terms of a preventative measure. But something that should be done in terms of a preventative measure. And item six is the Hemingway Street Drainage Project. So this project began this summer and involved seven homes based on our field walk on June 30th of this year. The seven homes are aligned in a northerly direction from the canal at Norton Park. And the field walk clearly identified a deteriorating system with wet and soggy grass and reports of standing water most of the year. The existing pipe that drains into the canal has failed and is likely beyond repair. The project design is straightforward. Thanks to John Bossi, our town engineer, is here as well tonight. He's done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate the legwork that he's done. But we would establish a discharge outlet elevation, verify pipe slopes, and determine the number of inlet structures to be installed. So basically, this is installation, you know, repair and installation, which we would install, own, and maintain the pipe. And the design would be at least a six-inch, if not eight-inch perforated pipe, depending on supplies and depending on what we can get, with inlet structures and, of course, the appropriate slope. And then we'd cover the pipe with at least 18 inches of proper material. The estimated construction value of the project would be just, again, back-of-the-napkin type of estimate, somewhere between $40,000 and $61,000. But keep in mind that construction material costs have been very volatile, and we're not exactly sure until we actually, you know, bid it. And, you know, we'll have to wait and see. But the project, as you know, it needs to proceed sequentially northerly. And so we need the approval of all seven essentially, or to the point where if one of the seven members says no, then it won't. But I will tell you, we met and described the project's scope and the concept, and all seven are on board. We had a meeting, and then those that weren't there communicated via email, all indicating that they'd like to go forward. So again, that's all verbal. Tonight, we're actually talking about approving later on in the agenda the items in terms of the agreement and the easement. So that's my next point, which is that we need to secure with some legal documents to be able to, first, one, have access to the property, but also, in this agreement, asking for cost sharing. And simply, the rationale behind cost sharing was if we know the project somewhere close to, on the upper end, $61,000, $62,000, $63,000 with seven homes, we're looking at basically the town doing 2/3, the residents doing 1/3. So a 2/3, 1/3 ratio, if you will. And that's how we came up with seven homes at $3,000, asking them for that to give us to $21,000. So roughly, give or take, 1/3 of the estimated cost, I should say. So that will appear in a draft form under New Business for you to look at this evening as well. And then discussion on the meeting schedule. Item seven, that I know that the council will look at that. And I don't, I just don't see anything that would, you know, necessarily require a meeting on the 7th or at any time. So I know that was discussed or is discussed every year. So if it is the pleasure of the council to skip the 7th, that is nothing really pending or crucial that I'm aware of, so that we could forego the 7th if that's the pleasure of the council and go right to the 21st.
Okay. And if anything should arise that requires our attention, of course, we could hold a special meeting sometime around that timeframe, either before or after or whatever. But this has generally been our process for many years. Thank you.
And that was item seven. And now we are at item eight, which is the dashboard. I just want to get to my notes there. Things are, numbers are looking good. So again, it's early in the fiscal year. We're running through September 30th numbers. Top line, the gray box, tiny print here, so I've got a struggle here. Through September 30th, $21,106,544 in terms of expenditures. So the percentage spent's $31,93. Two-year average is $32,84. So we're just trending slightly, you know, right on track, slightly under. The general government budget numbers on the left show the same, that we've spent $10,281,251 as of 9/30, which is a percentage of 41, excuse me, 41.45%. And the two-year average is 42. So again, running slightly under there. On the right side, the Board of Education budget, the same can be said through 9/30, $10,825,293, which represents 26.21%, running under the two-year average of 27.25. So as we dig deeper, drill down into the general government side, police overtime budget, budgeted amount of $550,000 through 9/30, $122,833 spent. The two-year average is $147,325. So we're running under by about $24,000 there. Total spent, $22,33 on the police overtime. So that is in line and running lower than the two-year average. Roadways overtime, same trend. That is a budget amount of $76,895. Spent through 9/30, $22,000, $5,286. The two-year average is $17,343. So a difference of $12,000. So we're running under there as well. Percentage spent is 6.87%. And the last item there, building and grounds overtime, similar trend with the number spent through 9/30, $8,704 versus the two-year average of $10,420. Percentage spent, 33.97. So all three of those overtime line items for police, highway, roads, and building and grounds, all running, trending lower than the two-year average. We do not have, obviously, roadway snow overtime. Thank God we don't have any October snowstorms that'll blow the budget right out of the water. And so roadways, building, and grounds, nothing to report because there are no expenses on those items. To the right, the municipal solid waste tonnage is running less than the two-year average as well. Through 9/30, we've had $1,475. The two-year average is $1,641. So we're slightly under there. So that is also a good trend. The hauler tonnage for recycling is through 9/30, 221 tons, and the two-year average, 244. So we're running under there as well. Unfortunately, you know, I think the issue there is we're going to have to monitor very closely because, as you can see, we're going to run over at some point the budgeted number of 36 in the tip fee. But as you know, the recycling industry was thrown on its head and obviously looking at a tip fee of $49,55. So it's something that we've got to take a close look at. And we'll continue to monitor, see where these numbers go. But, you know, it is what it is, so to speak. And unfortunately, we're just going to have to keep a close eye on it. Next page is the revenues, also looking good, on track. On the revenue side, we had through 9/30, $29,701. And so percentage received is 4522. The two-year average is 4576. You know, again, very close, running slightly under, but running very close to in line with what the two-year average is. Same with the taxes and 9/30, $22,000, reporting $28,678,384, representing a 58.53% to date. The two-year average is $58,01. So right in line, nothing that I see. And talking with Rob as well, nothing out of the ordinary. So we are tracking. The unsigned fund balance, $12,152,385, which was 19.15%. However, we've got just about $2.4 million that you see there that was used for fund balance budgeted for the fiscal year 23. Tax relief was $1,424,500. The CIP contribution was $555,000. And the additional appropriation, which happened last time, the insurance fund deficit of $425, will bring that fund balance down to $9,747,885, but still a healthy 14.84%. And again, I think that was earlier in our workshop, confirmed and validated by Palady in terms of where we are with our fund balance.
Mike, I just have a quick question regarding the health insurance budget deficit. It's going to be returned from Debt Management Fund. Will that show up here at year-end, or does that happen during the year?
I think, I'll check with Rob, but I think that's a year-end.
It's a year-end adjustment?
I think so. I'm not quite sure, but I'll have, that's a question.
I was just curious if that happens now or he has to just get it done before the end of the fiscal year?
I will ask.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. There, we got that. And then next is our special funds. We have the Recreation Fund. So the, again, I think I said the last time we did the dashboard, these numbers are obviously different than the two-year average because of the two-year average with COVID. So we are sort of catch up, if you will, getting back to, or not catch up, but getting back to the norm of what programs and revenues and expenses should be. So it's hard in the rec fund balance revenue to look at that. But I'll go through the numbers. They were through 9/30, in a $270,000 budget, through 9/30, $150,745. That's a percentage spent of $55,83. And the two-year average was $26,59. And then on the Robertson Airport, we have, actually, let me go through, let me go across so I stay in within the budget, the same fund, Recreation. On the Recreation revenue side, $194,200 was budgeted through 9/30. They have $56,679. So the percentage received was 29.19%. And the two-year average is 15.54. So again, you see the expense side higher, but you also see the revenue side higher on that as well. On Robertson Airport operating budget expenditures, budgeted $86,050. We have through 9/30, $22,1,798. So percentage spent is only 2%. Other capital and other expenditures of $35,797. And it was stated by the chair, a lot of renovations going on at the airport. And it looks fantastic. The airport operating budget revenues through 9/30, Percentage received, 21.17%. And their fund balance is $68,333. So the airport is in line, doing well, and finishing up in its renovations moving forward. Next, WPCA facility budget expenditures, budget of $4,245,107. And through 9/30, $2,381,167. So the percentage spent, $56,09. The two-year average, $39,64. And drilling down into those numbers, we found that a lot of it is indicated the difference between is really a timing issue with the purchase orders and encumbrances this year versus last year. So these are included, whereas last year, there hadn't been. So it's skewed the numbers slightly higher over the two-year average. And the revenue side through 9/30, $29,340. Percentage received of 71.71%. Excuse me, two-year average is 1.4, so nearly half. And again, the indication there is that they had some grants and as well as some, in the past, grants. That's why the number in the two-year average is higher. Grants as well as some higher connection fees in terms of the revenues in previous years on the two-year average. So that's the rationale behind why those numbers don't quite track for the two-year average. And on the Plainville Library operating budget, expenditures of budgeted of $763,461. The number through 9/30 is $230,273. The percentage spent is 30.16%. The two-year average is 34.65. So that is running under, slightly under the two-year average on their expenditures. And on their operating revenue side, a budget of $763,461, collected through 9/30, $192,76. So the percentage received is 25.16%. And that's above the two-year average of 24.2%. That's our four special funds. And our last page in the report for the dashboard is the Major Projects Report. First item is the Road Bond Project. That was $10,636,905 of project budgeted. And expenditures to date, $7,893,476, with a balance of $2,743,429. So 74.21% complete at this point. In that, that is the five-year, I think you call the five-year Road Bond Project. And nearly 75% complete there. Next is Wheeler School Project at $23,515. And with a project or expenditure of $20,976,904, project balance of nine, I'm sorry, $2,538,096. That means that the project completion is 89%, nearly 90% complete. I'm not sure, I don't have the detail in terms of what might be outstanding there, but I would imagine that that project is coming pretty close to completion soon. And I don't have much information on the High School Turf Maintenance Fund other than it is, has a project balance of $179. And I will look for more information on that. And the ARPA funds, we have the allocation of the budget of $5,189,198. And again, that was carved up into two tranches. And we have received both of those tranches. So the total allocation is here and deposited. Expenditures to date of $1,884,038, with a project balance of $3,305,160. And that means 36.31% completed on those funds. So the last item, Town Line Road Reconstruction, 92% complete, numbers there of $1,43,400 allocation with expenditures of $963,048. Project balance is $80,000, 92% complete. So nearly complete on the Town Line Road Reconstruction Project as well. And that, I believe, is all I have for the dashboard. Any questions?
Everybody okay? Sorry, I was reading ahead. Any questions for Michael with his report? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we are at that point where Andy gets to shine on item number nine happening.
Thank you. I've, I've never seen Cindy smile so much to see me take this over.
Yeah, you could have a little more box in your
Yeah, right. So we do have a few happenings. From the Revenue Collector, the 2023 sewer bills for the time period of November 1st, 2022 to October 31st, 2023 will be sent by the end of October. Residents will receive one bill with two payment options. The first is to pay the whole amount in November of 2022. The second payment option is to pay in two installments, one in November 2022 and the other in May of 2023. Just to note though, the town does not send out bills in May, so residents will only receive one bill in, in October. From the Senior Center, we have some updates. The Chair mentioned a few of them, so I won't repeat those. But for any information on any of the Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. Or you could register online at www.schedulesplus.com/plainville. All these programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. So first, we have importance of calling 911. This is on Tuesday, tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Learn why it's important to call 911 in an emergency and not wait. This is an informative, free presentation and will have you prepared for any emergency so that you can be prepared and you can call. You will also take home a free file of Life Card, which is used to list your medical diagnosis and medications and can be helpful for first responders if responding to an emergency. Also tomorrow at 10:30 AM is grandparents raising grandchildren. If you are a grandparent or a relative who is raising a grandchild, niece or nephew, you are not alone. And this is a support group at the Senior Centers where you can share resources, ideas, challenges, joys and other experiences of raising grandchildren. On Thursday, October 20th, is Hauntings in Connecticut. It's at 10:30 AM. Connecticut has long claimed to be the host of hauntings and John Willett, the history guy, is there to guide you and explore some purportedly haunted locations and influences behind those stories. Too bad I'll be at a training or else I thought that'd be a fun thing to do. The Memory Cafe at the Senior Center will also be on Thursday at 2:00 PM. Memory Cafes are a safe and supportive social gathering for people with changes in their memory, along with their care partners. So you can relax and socialize with others experiencing similar life challenges. And I think that's all of them. Yeah, great.
There they are.
Okay. Thank you, Andy, for your reports. Does anybody have any questions for either Michael or Andy with the information they gave us? All set? Okay, thank you both.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I, if I could, just to revisit item six, I, I omitted part of the documents I talked about for your review and approval under new business is the, the agreement. And the agreement references the Appendix A, which would be the easement, which is there for your review as well. But it also mentions Appendix B. And I think you should have a, hopefully at your desk, the suggested schedule. And again, this is prepared as an option on the cost sharing, should someone not be able to come up with the $3,000 at the start of the project and needs to opt for a payment plan. This is just a suggested, my recommendation to the council in terms of what would be added in, in that, in those agreements. So, you know, I just try to keep it simple.
Okay.
And if you think it's too long, we can shorten it, but I, I think that was my, my recommendation as a reasonable.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Make, make a comment also about the agreement that I noticed. On the second page of the agreement, the first paragraph, it looks like there's some missing language there. I'm not sure, Mike, can you take a look at it?
Second page, first or second paragraph?
First paragraph.
First paragraph. Yeah, some, some, yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely some missing language there. Needs to be reworked, so I wanted to bring that to your attention before there's a vote. Now, is that something we should take care of tonight or is this something, and John, feel free to jump in if I, you know, but, or is this something we could take up at our next meeting with the correct, if there is information missing? We'll delay the project, I guess, is what I'm asking, if we wait until the next meeting to make sure that we have all the proper
Yeah, and again, I was, you know, hoping for, you know, a consensus that the, and again, the agreement's going to obviously change. We don't have any, everything specific here because it's going to say the participant, the homeowner, their address and so forth. And again, this is an effort to get this document started and the process started to get in front of the owners on paper to, because there could quite honestly be some language that, that they don't agree with. And I think that just speaks to the, the, the payment. I think we can rework that, that they essentially, that was going to talk about the installation and the process of construction and, and timing the, the fact that the, we were seeking payment at the start of construction. You know, seven, you know, calendar days, there's just some reworking there, but the gist of it is to
So if, if the Vice Chair makes the motion and then just adds the wording to execute the agreement with changes or with additions?
Yeah, in consultation with, with Mike there that
Would that be okay, Mike?
The ability to
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
So when the Vice Chair makes the motion, if he adds in authorize the town manager to execute the agreement with additions or?
Yeah, subject to my review and
Okay, subject to review by town attorney?
That would be fine and I could look at it.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Yeah, no, I'd rather not delay it, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Nope, all right. Next portion of our meeting is our public comment section. During this time, we invite the public to come to our podium. Please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. I really didn't want to be here, but this council finds ways of dragging me back here. You're not going to like me tonight. I did tell Robert Lee when he was leaving, God help the town of Plainville when he leaves, and it's coming through now from what I see. And since this council refuses to say a prayer, I'm going to offer the prayer that I wrote for Joanne several years ago, because I think this council could really use some prayer. Dear God, our heavenly Father, please grant our town council the knowledge, wisdom, strength and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville. Amen.
Amen.
With that being said, I feel you had a responsibility to me to mention the email I sent to you on a public hearing last meeting with my support of the window shop and 80-something thousand dollar project in the firehouse. I heard the Chair ask three times if anybody had anybody, just anything to say, and no one said anything. And that email went to all of you. And Councilwoman Tompkins told me, I told her I was going to be out of state. She told me she would read it. And to me, that is incompetence on the part of this town council to not honor a citizen's request at a public hearing. And I'm really, really disappointed in this council. It should never happen.
I requested that in, in writing to, to have a piece of paper here, but I didn't have the piece of paper. And I couldn't read it from my phone, John, I'm sorry. I had trouble finding it on my phone, even when I was told the date, so
I checked with Lisa first and
I apologize.
All of you received it. I just hope that doesn't happen again, because it's going to be other citizens who can't make a meeting. And to me, that was important. I really liked those people that owned the, the window shop. They're a great outfit.
But we approved them.
I know, but that's besides the point. You asked citizens input. I'm a citizen, I want to back a local contractor. Because you were choosing them and they weren't high, they weren't low bidder. So to me, that was important. And your three-minute thing, I can't say what I got to say tonight in 10 minutes. So I want to talk about the Tofflon project. That renovate as, as new project is the biggest waste of money in the state and it was the most stupid thing I've ever seen. I served on the building committees for six years, the Tofflon School and the High School. And it was just unbelievable. The, the high school was so bad that I asked them not have my name put on the plaque. And the other thing, you have to stop giving these schools to architects and engineers. I know we need them, but you're turning over a school, you're giving them a blank check and see how much money you can spend. If you would just repair what you need, you can do complete mechanical and electrical over floors, ceilings, lights, plumbing fixtures, everything. You can probably knock 20, $20 million off of this project. You have to stop redesigning schools. It's not necessary. You have the bones there and that's all you need. And these parents and even the Board of Ed, they are so gullible, naive, dealing with academia, they do not stand a chance. You have a, a person who's on the Board of Ed and they're voting for these things like the chiller. She says, does the chiller have anything to do with the kitchen? Then they ask, does the sprinkler system have anything to do with the roof repair? Because the sprinklers are fed through the roof. Give me a break. Where, where are these people coming from? Why are they even on a Board of Ed? Why are they even asking questions like this? These projects have to stop. In a way, this council, I agree that you stopped that project. In my way of thinking, it should have been, the building committee should have questioned it first. When I was on there and I questioned Tofflon, they, they came before this council and asked to remove me from the council because I wouldn't agree with the project. Come to the end, we saved a million dollars and we also did the playscape for the kids in the project. So there's huge, huge amounts of waste in these projects. And keep fighting it. If you have to tell the public you don't agree with it and you want to put it out the budget, we beat them before two times. You can beat them again. The council get together and say, this is too much money. It's not worth what they're doing. So whatever. Thank you and good night. I'm going home.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Thanks for the extra time.
Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? I'm going to close it. Yes, sir.
Yes, he does. Yep.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. Guess it's been a while for me, so, hi, everybody. Let's see, we have an election coming up in a, in a couple of weeks. And I just want to mention that I know the Republicans did very well in the last town election. And I just would like to remind you to stay humble, because there are an awful lot of people in this town that didn't vote for the Republicans because of how wonderful the Republicans are. They're just scared to death what the Democrats are trying to do to our country. Okay, that's just something on my mind. And so I just don't want it to let you think you have sort of a full reign because you have such an approval. Because I know there are a lot of people like me. I voted totally Republican. You know, I, I don't know if I've ever done that before, but I mean, that's until I, you know, I see a Democrat Party going back to the way it was 40, 50 years ago. I mean, there's, there's no way. And there are a lot of people who feel that way. Okay, I'd like to address the recreational marijuana. I would like to keep it out of this town. Do we have or can we have an ordinance in this town to keep any of these, you know, pot stores out of this, out of the town? I mean, first off, God, what, what an abuse of language. Recreation, recreation. To me, that's swimming, boating, tennis, playing golf, jogging, hiking. It's not getting stoned on pot. So I mean, somebody's, you know, just the way the language has been used by the, the powers that be is disgusting. So how are we handling that in this town? Can we keep it out of this town? Do we, can we get an ordinance from the town council? Can we put it to a referendum on the, the people of the town? But I mean, I'd like to, to keep it the hell away out of this town. We don't, we don't need it. The people don't need it. We don't want it. Do, do, do you have an answer or anything or has that been considered?
Wait, we can give you an answer. I'm not really, I, I'm sorry to say, we don't have an ordinance right now.
Pardon me?
We do not have an ordinance regarding that. The council did discuss certain parameters or, you know, like a geographic area where certain activities can't take place. And I apologize, I don't remember all the details of it. So we can definitely get you some more information on it.
Okay, because, you know, there, there's probably more, a lot more people that would like to keep that out of the town than, than in the town. And I guess my time's up almost, but
It, it did expire. I'll give you another few seconds or so.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's as crowded as it used to be, so.
Well, yeah, there it is.
I'd just like to thank the town for installing a feminine hygiene product dispenser in the men's room at the library. I, I, I mean, that was, that's a very nice thoughtful touch and I, I just, I'm curious, how often does it have to be restocked? Can anybody give me an answer on that one?
No.
Because I, I don't know why we're participating in this kind of insanity, but I mean, what, what is a feminine hygiene dispenser doing in the men's room at the library?
I think that's a discussion that would take place, that's a long discussion that you, we, that would have to take place.
Pardon me?
I said, it's a very long, involved discussion that would have to take place. I, I don't, I'm not sure we have enough time for that or we have enough information
Well, I know legality's there and you're probably being forced into it by somebody or other. But it's a crazy idea and a waste of money. And I don't know how we get back to being normal again in this town, the state, or even maybe this country, you know? Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't done so? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. The first question I have, the financial dashboard, do we have any copies here? Or is it on the internet?
It's online.
Is it online?
Yes, it is.
Did I miss it? There's no, no copies here?
I don't have any copies here.
Okay, no problem. I'll, I'll look it up on the internet, no problem. Thank you.
Yes.
You got one?
Two. The only reason I ask is before they used to have some The only reason I ask is before, they used to have some laying around.
Oh, okay, well.
That's the only reason. Okay. The next ques, next subject is exactly what's in front of you. This list, if you remember, I submitted this about two months ago, three months ago, the same exact list, asking the school board, and I was hoping there'd be a representative, but there was no representative, for very basic numbers. Example, if you look, I say Plaenville High, principal, of course, there's only gonna be one. Assistant principal, in this case, I think the high school only has one, I'm not sure they have two.
Oh, they have two.
Okay, they have two. There, there's what I'm looking for. Number of teachers, number of students in that particular school, and the budget the school has. What I, I submitted it to the school, the, the origin, the first time through, and what I got back was the, you folks know, when tax time comes, they come up with their booklet, what they're looking for, for next year's taxes, with all of that minutia, and I have no idea what I'm reading. Three-quarters of the thing, I don't know what I'm reading. All I was looking for was some basic numbers. And now I'm thinking about it again, we, you know, what, what sparked this again was I noticed something about the Wheeler roof. We're supposed to be funding the Wheeler roof or something?
Wheeler roof?
Did I miss something here? Maybe I did.
Okay, then, no, scratch that.
Are you talking about the Wheeler from middle school?
But I, I still, I still said to myself, wait a minute, the bottom line, and bear with me on this, the bottom line is, I'm asking for something that's very, very basic. I'm not asking for something for the school board to do, anything exotic. They should put together, they could put together this list in an hour, if that. And I never, all I got was, I hate to be so direct, it was, here, just give this one, and he'll keep his mouth shut. So I was a little disturbed with that. And it just finally boiled to the point now, I'm still.
No, keep going.
Okay. So I'm still hoping that with the assistance of the town council, and perhaps the manager, somebody can address them in a political way, that could somebody please put these numbers in, so I get a number, so it's available.
So, Mr. Frangos, I'm not gonna let your time run out. This, this chart you gave us is principal, assistant principal, so forth and so on, and then across, it's the schools. But do you want numbers of, numbers, do you want salary, what, what are you looking for?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's very basic. How many principals? One.
How many?
Okay.
At each school?
Okay, how many, how many assistant principal? In this case, the high school, two, period, it's over. Number three, teachers. How many teachers? Okay, for this school, for the high school, it's necessary they have twenty teachers.
Okay.
That's a, no, I'm not looking for salaries, I'm not gonna get into.
Well, I'm, you're, you are looking for, okay, just the numbers of teachers, numbers of students, somewhere, okay, got it.
That's all I'm asking for.
And the budget is the budget for each school?
What is, what's submitted, after the total town budget is submitted, how much goes to the school, the school Board of Education, and how does it allocate it from the Board of Education for the individual Plaenville school, the middle school, is it?
Right.
No more, no less. I, I'm not getting into the real depth. If there was something there I see later, that I say, wait, this doesn't, in my mind, doesn't add up as it should, then I'd be coming back with something else. But this is as basic, that's one of the reasons it disturbed me on the original time I sent this in.
So.
I said, what was I asking for?
Yeah, I just wanna understand. So if you get the number of principals, the number of assistant principals, what, what's, what's the end result? Are you trying to tie back numbers of people to budget numbers?
Just general knowledge for me.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I understand.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I don't mean, I'm sorry if I found it sounding aggressive, that's not the intent. It's just basic numbers for myself.
Okay.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lead a crusade. If, if that's what you're looking for, no, I'm not. But I like general knowledge.
Okay. Well, we can, we can, I'm sure they would be happy to give you that information.
I hope so.
It's probably all in their, their budget every year. They prepare a lot of documents for their budget presentations, and I'm sure all this is very easily available to them.
Again, I know I'm being redundant, but, but if you look at this list, this can't get any more basic than basic. I'm just asking for some numbers. I'm not saying how you calculated, why you came up with this, why is this, it should not be this, or it should be that. I'm just looking for basic numbers.
Okay.
And then they give me a whole booklet when they're submitting for tax time, and I said, what are you sending me this for? But anyway, we, I've beaten that to death.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see. And the next item is, and it was alluded to somewhere, you're talking about the Senior Center? I just wanna mention, I went today to the Plaenville Senior Center to get a booster shot, and these people did one magnificent, they do a magnificent job down there. Absolutely magnificent. There are people everywhere coming in and out, and they had it under control, and it was in, done, and out the door. Wonderful job, and I just had to compliment them on that. Let's drop that one. Let's see, I got that for you. Meeting schedule. Oh, I'm sorry. The, the last thing I'm gonna bring up is something I didn't hear too well up here, something about the meeting schedule? What was, I didn't pick up all it was said.
Typically, the council chooses to cancel the meeting the day before the election, so that Monday, we won't be having it. However, if anything of any urgency comes up, the council has the option to reconvene, but that Monday, we're going to not have a meeting.
Perfect. And I, and I will be totally candid with you, is because we have a very lean audience here, unfortunately.
Yes.
I was hoping to God I wasn't going to be hearing something about, let's not schedule these meetings this way, let's not, and I don't want that ever to go away.
Okay.
That's Louis being Louis. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. All the, all the guests here tonight have spoken. I'm sorry?
Somebody be getting back to me on this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Will do. I will close the public comment section of the meeting. Moving on to old business, we do not have any old business, we have some items under new business, so may I have item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to approve a zero, again, a zero increase to the sewer user rate for the period November first, 2022 to October thirty-first, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion for the town council acting as water pollution control authority to approve and authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Ty Bond of Middletown, Connecticut for design services for the Honor Heights Sewer Project not to exceed sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
This motion is subject to review by the town attorney. Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement for the Hemingway Street Drainage Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes care of our new business. Other discussions of interest? Michael, have you anything else to bring forward tonight?
Uh, no, I do not.
You're all set? Okay. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to clarify, you know, the path for Mr. Frangos's request.
Yep.
Are we going to just, you know, perhaps ask our town staff to simply convey this to the Board of Ed and give this to the Board of Ed tomorrow?
Sure, if that's all right. Maybe you could, perhaps you could scan it in and, and send it, and if you could copy the council on it?
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Just so that we're clear on.
Sure.
The conveyance method.
I was gonna get there. Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything? All right. We do not have an executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?